Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. We remind everybody this meeting is being taped under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38. In terms of acknowledgements, for this is September 11th. Terrible day, September 11th, 2001, when our country was attacked. Over 3,000 people died, over 6,000 people were injured, many of them permanently and horribly in the attacks on the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and also a plane crash in Shanksville, Pennsylvania, which was intended to, I think, was aimed for the Congress. So I'd ask all of you to join me in a moment of silence, thought or prayer, for these people. Thank you. We'd also like to acknowledge people from Westport who have various roles in the town and passed on not too long ago. I don't know most of these people except for one, and those of you who know these people could certainly add your thoughts. Cheryl Teut, who I think was the clerk dispatcher for the Highway Department, does anybody know Cheryl?
Just passing.
Pat Dean, I believe she was the spouse of the late fire chief George.
Yes, Ms. Dean certainly was a person around town. She'd always have a nice chat with us and, you know, she'll be Mrs. A Person Around Town. Her family's still around too, so.
Beth Easterly, involved with the Grange and called.
She was with the Grange. I believe she might have been on Cultural Council. Either she went to a lot of meetings when I was on about 30 years ago. She was involved with dance and whatnot. So, yeah, she's another one that was involved with the community.
Yeah, and John Fennelly, who's been here in terms of the oyster business.
His father.
Well-known around town. Anyway, we offer the families of these people sincere condolences. Is there any other acknowledgements? Okay, we'll move along the pace. The first item on the agenda, by the way, I do want to mention, the next meeting of this committee is two weeks from tonight, which would be the 25th of September, and there is an executive committee meeting, an executive session tonight. So we ask you to leave, please don't take it personally. Okay, the first item is scheduled public hearing at 6:05 PM, which it is, but Jim, is this not going to take place because of?
Yeah, I did speak to the applicant and he said that he was going to send a letter stating that they were withdrawing the request. I think the applicant has found another site, so I would either, the board can either grant leave to withdraw, or they could, it's a chance to either granting leave to withdraw or denying the application.
For the record, this was a continuation from August 21st, a request from Charles F. Sheehan of Affordable Auto Rentals and Sales for a Class II Motor Vehicle License at 1052 State Road in Westport, with a total of 40 cars, and James Haynes to be the manager. So that would be, should we vote on this, you were suggesting?
Yes.
Okay, so it's an active request, and that's why we should vote on it. I thought we could pass over it, probably close it out, and this is not going to come to fruition anyway, so.
What kind of motion are you?
You could motion grant leave to withdraw.
So both?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. That's the only public hearing item for tonight. Item number two, or section number two, are licenses and permits. The first is A to a request from the Holy Ghost Club, 171 Saum Road, for the following one-day all alcohol liquor licenses. There's a fish fry on September 23rd, 2023, from 4:00 to 9:00 PM, a food pantry fundraiser on October 7th, 2023, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, and a fundraiser on October 22nd, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. There was to be another item, but that was passed over, and that will be discussed in a later day.
The memorial scratch.
That's the memorial. I said that, just out of the reason for that was further information I have to come. So we're voting on these three items off of the Holy Ghost Club.
I see it has favorable police recommendations, all over.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Any comments? If you're not, all in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
Aye also, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Two Bs, requests from the South Coast Harvest Festival LLC for a common vicula license for the harvest festival, to be held at the Westport Fairgrounds, 200 Pine Hill Road on the date September 29th to October 1st, 2023. Jim, bring us up the other, we had discussed this before, this is the follow-up.
This is a common vic license request. I did get a, well, Paul did get a police report, it's in the packet. It's a favorable report, they do write request and details during the event, but other than that, they did not have any objection to the event.
Okay. Do the Harvest Festival Committee wish to discuss on this?
I think you're all on the phone.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Any comments?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for doing all the labor, appreciate it.
Hope for good weather on that weekend.
Good weather or a couple more tents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you. Item C is the request to transfer the aquaculture lease sites from John P. Fennelly to Christine Fennelly. They are the Gooseberry Site Number Three through, this is, Jim, can you tell us the significance of this, through five, 1024, and the East Branch Site Number Three through four, 3026, and then the Lee's Loft Number Two through four, 3026. Any little background on that for us? And of course, if anyone's here, somebody else.
They are here, they're here.
Yes.
So the regulations just state that any license issued under these rules and regulations shall upon the death of the licensee continue in full force and effect, subject to the same terms, conditions, and regulations imposed by the original license, for the balance of the unexpired term or one year, whichever is longer. So that's why you have the different dates there.
Okay.
And Chris Leonard is okay with this, right, by our notation?
He is.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, Christine or Carrie, any wish to make any comments?
No, unfortunately, my dad passed away.
Yes, acknowledgement earlier.
Thank you.
First, I'll condolences to you.
Yeah, that's, within 45 days, we had to transfer. My mom's getting ready for a celebration of life this Wednesday, so no questions there.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, again, our condolences to you. Next section, appointments and resignations. The first is an appointment, 3A, to the request to appoint Andy Duncan as the Principal Maintenance Specialist Physician, or to the Principal Maintenance Specialist Physician.
So this is the town hall maintenance position here, the town hall annexed, been vacant for about, probably four or five weeks now. We had over a dozen applications, we interviewed a few, well, I interviewed a few of the candidates. Andy Duncan, who is here tonight, was, had experience, has experience, significant experience in this type of work. He interviewed very well, hopefully looking forward to working with him, and recommend that the board appoint him as Maintenance Specialist.
Is there an effective date?
The effective date, I believe, is two weeks.
I gave my notice today, so two weeks from today, which would be the 25th.
Do you move it, Cheryl?
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Duncan, do you wish to say anything to us?
No, thanks for the opportunity, and I came away to get work.
Okay, we look forward to you, we'll see you around.
That's what we like to hear.
Great, great.
Thank you.
We didn't vote.
I know, I was just going to say something about. I was going to mention, did I see on your resume you had a degree in psychology?
I do.
Oh, boy.
This is going to be useful. Please, this is going to be useful. Hopefully, I won't need it here.
Never can tell. Well, thank you, okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we congratulate you, and look forward to seeing you soon.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy.
Okay, item 3B is our list of requests from the Finance Committee to appoint, and they just read these, Zachary LeBrow to the Agricultural Open Space Preservation Trust. In other words, these are people from the Finance Committee who are serving on other committees, for the benefit of the public. And also, Mr. LeBrow is beyond the, in addition to the Agricultural Open Space Preservation Trust, the Energy Committee, and the Tax Incentive Committee. I'll do these as approved. And then Cindy Brown to the ADA Transition Plan Committee and Capital Improvements Planning Committee, and Gary Carrero to the ADA Transition Plan Committee. On the next page, Hugh Morton to the Public Safety Staffing Committee, and Lawrence Holsworth to the Internet Advisory Committee. Jim, comments?
I have no issue, I'd recommend approval.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item is C, request from the Infrastructure Oversight Committee to appoint Jerry Cutino. Jim, or C here on this committee as well?
Yeah, it was just an oversight, Jerry's been on, I think, since the beginning. We just didn't get the information, Paul, or in time, I don't think. We didn't get the response, or we had the wrong email, so, but he still wants to stay on, he was at our meeting last week.
Good, great.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion, comments? All in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
The motion also carries unanimously, and we welcome Jerry to that committee. Great job, as he has always done. The last one, D, is the request from the Historical Commission to reappoint Caroline Bolter.
So move.
Second.
I know Caroline, she's done a great job, she's one of my neighbors, and I give this my support. Any further comments? And is all in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, none? The motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next group of items would be action items. There are a number of these, we'll start right down through them. 4A, request from the Highway Surveyor to approve the job description and position classification of Office Manager Dispatch, appointment of April Oliveira in the corresponding AFSCME agreement. Jim, could you decide on that for us?
So this is, the Highway Department, there's one person right now in the office. It's a clinical position, it's a little bit, you know, it pays a little bit less than most of the assistant office positions here in town, so the Assistant Town Clerk, the Assistant Treasurer, Assistant Planner, Assistant, the Office Managing Building Inspector, and the Board of Health. So from the Highway Survey, the thought was to bring this position up, or create a position in that department, similar to the other ones here in town, the same pay rate, similar responsibilities, some of the, you know, for every department, it gets a little bit different as to what's being done within a department, but overall, the job duties and the description are similar. So I'd asked the board to approve the job description and the position. This was negotiated with ASME, and that's why we have a separate ASME, ASME is the union representing the highway workers. So that would be ask number one from the board, to create the position and approve the job description and the ASME agreement. After speaking with the Highway Surveyor today, the person that we thought would take this position is not ready to take that position now, but I'd still like to create that position, have that opening there for the future. I think if that position ever does become vacant, in order to get a qualified candidate, we're going to need this, it's only, it's about an extra dollar an hour, it's not a significant increase, but it puts it in line with all the other positions here in the town hall.
So we're not booting April, she's still in state, she still can keep her current position, but if she leaves, we have this one in place, correct?
It would be the option, or if she wanted to move up, she would have the option, subject to the board's appointment in the future, David.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, just clarity though, this is, the way it's written, it almost reads as three items, the job description, the appointment of April, which is not going to take place, and then it says the corresponding agreement, does that have to be approved too? Is this a two-parter or a three-parter?
Yeah, it's at least a two-part, and the second part has two parts to it. So the ASME agreement is the agreement with ASME that actually creates the position. So creating the position, we have the agreement with ASME, and...
The job description.
The job description, yes.
But not the appointment.
But not the appointment.
So we want to do these all as one, is that better?
I think that's...
I feel fine with it, because there's no effective date yet anyway, she hasn't signed it.
Okay, I'm okay with that, just as long as we understand it in the public interest. Okay, motion made and seconded, further comments? All in favor, can you keep saying aye?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Okay, thank you for that clarification. B, request from the Cable Advisory Board to approve the Spectrum Northeast LLC contract renewal. Jim, any others?
I read it.
So we have Irene Buck and John Rizendis.
They're in trouble now.
Let's see if we can...
He says he's standing by.
Attorney Hewig is the KBO rep that does the cable contracts.
Welcome this evening.
Thank you.
For the record, John Rizendis and Irene Buck.
Texted me, said he's standing by, so should we start, and or should we wait?
Want to give a moment for the lawyer?
For the lawyer?
We have the attorney who is waiting somewhere in space. I'll get started, I'm sure he'll catch up. And I'm, but for those I haven't formally met, which is probably not very...
Time to bottom.
For those I haven't formally met, and I am Chair of the Cable Advisory Committee. Thanks to your esteemed member of your board, Steve O'Leary, who about a year and a half ago offered me this opportunity, and no opportunity to back down. It's been a fantastic learning experience, because so much has changed in 10 years, but even in 20 years, when the community first bought into a phenomenon that happened across the country, where small communities have their own local TV. And in this community, we have evolved slowly over 20 years, with a lot of concerns along the way, but thanks to the Select Board in making that decision, so thanks to staff like John and Valerie, who are there day in and night out, collecting a lot of information, and also thanks to the reality that we can go through something like COVID and continue to keep the wheels of the community rolling by this wonderful link that people have. And clearly, it has changed since it got started, and it will continue to change, technology does that to us. But we are absolutely thrilled to come to you tonight with a renewed contract that is, I think, going to bring more to the community, and that clearly was a very important part of negotiations. So John Rizendis, who is the Director...
There he is.
...of our community, and Attorney William Hewig, who did a lot of hard work, and big thanks to my committee, who has worked for at least a year and a half, and we have followed all the procedures required for renewing the contract of this to a community. We've provided open meetings, we have meetings that are presented on video for people, we've welcomed complaints and concerns. We are here to bring a contract for services. We are not here to talk about any of the specifics of the corporation, or specifics of programming that might be offered across the country, or not offered across the country. This is services for our community, and John has a small handout that we put together from the contract. But I'm going to ask Attorney Hewig to talk a little, because he has been in the trenches working with Charter to make sure that they understood what the Westport Cable Advisory Committee would like to see happen as we renew the contract, and then we'll be open for questions and so on and so forth. Welcome.
Could you hold on just a second? Jim, who's the J here?
That's me.
That's you?
That's me.
Okay, and this is Mr.?
Attorney William Hewig. And his specialty is working with cable across the state, across, I don't know, Bill, you can give us the whole background, but he knows this business, and he has highly been recommended to carry out this work, and has been extraordinarily persistent to make sure that our concerns were heard by the powers that be. So with that, go ahead, Bill, if you would like to just give a review of the kinds of work we have, a contract...
Certainly.
That we can share, but...
Good evening, members of the board and members of the Cable Committee. The introduction was correct, I've been doing this for at least 32 or 33 years, and have negotiated several hundred licenses, a lot of them recently with Charter. And one of the things that has happened in the last three or four years, I think partly as a result of COVID, but also because of the changing economies in cable, is that the cable companies are much less generous than they used to be. I think they see, they may think they see the handwriting on the wall, and that is that cable subscriberships are going down. I don't think cable TV is a sunset industry, I don't think it's going to die out and go away, certainly not within 10 years, but I think it certainly is having a lot of competition from streaming services and so on. So we're seeing decline in cable revenues, and when that happens, the cable companies just feel less generous. So it was a real fight with Charter on this round to get them to give us more money than what we had before. I've done a lot of licenses with Charter recently, in the last two or three years, six, seven, or eight, and they just aren't generous, and they have also cut back on other services and other provisions we had in our last license. I'll just go through the current licenses that's being proposed for you, very briefly to give you an idea of generally what's in it. In many respects, it's a lot like the license we just have, we currently have, the one from 2013. A lot of provisions stayed the same, and that's because we had to fight to prevent them from being reduced or eliminated altogether. But some of the things that are important are gross annual revenues does include advertising home, excuse me, advertising and home shopping revenues, and that gives us a little bit more money when we calculate a gross annual revenue percentage, which in our case is going to be 4%. We'll get a little bit more, about half of a percentage more, so that's important to keep in the license, and it was. The term of the license will be, is being proposed to be 10 years, 10 years is the maximum under state law. I always recommend going for the maximum term for the following reason. Your access folks are like a business, and they depend on an annual predictable income stream to be able to plan out their future budget, and plan out their future programming, and run the business in an organized and consistent way. So a five-year license, a three-year license leaves that income stream interrupted way too soon. So I always recommend going with a 10-year license term. Technology improvements will happen, you can't write them into the license anyway, so we're not cutting ourselves out from that. And the other thing is that we are, because of the change in the industry, we are probably going to get a better deal now than we would in five years, or three years, or four years. So I recommend going with 10 years, and we get a nice, long, predictable income stream, as we'll see when we get to the part of the license about the revenues. The insurance and the bond provisions comply with state law, they're essentially the same as they were in the last license, we have insurance protection of $1 million, $2 million, and a $1 million umbrella for CGL, and automobile coverage, this is the cable company buying this insurance, automobile accident coverage, and also workers' coverage, not standard, but it's in the current license, and the bond provision is the same as in the current license. Also, and this is important, the service area is the same. The service area is the minimum amount of houses you have to have on a street in order to get, for example, it's a new subdivision or an extension on a street, in order to get the cable company to stream more cable line and connect more customers. It's very, it's a very good service area for Westport, it's 20 homes per mile. A lot of the, a lot of the cable licenses nowadays are cutting it back to 30 homes per mile, 35. Westport remained at 20, that's a really good number, and I'm happy we're able to keep that. It's also 150-foot setback, meaning the property can be up to 150 feet away from the plant, and the cable company is obligated to connect it. High definition is something that everybody wants, everybody wants an HD channel, and Charter is just not at the place yet where they're going to give that to us. There is a provision in the license that says we can ask for it, and we have to, we're into a contract with one of their commercial services groups, they call it, separate company, and they'll give us an HD channel, but it will be very, very expensive, it will be prohibitively expensive for us now. It's in the license, the amount of money that it will cost is not in the license, Charter tells me it's $30,000 a year, that's just way, way, way too much. From Verizon, you get them for free, and from Comcast, you get it for a payment of money that you would pay for the equipment, which is about $20,000 to $30,000 one-time payment. I'm hoping that Charter in the future will come around and change, and they have, they've changed a lot of their things, their provisions and their policies over the last two or three years, and this may be one of them. So while we can't expect to get or be able to pay for an HD channel in the immediate future, you know, in the first one or two years, I'm hopeful perhaps that will change, and if it is, it's in the license and we can ask for it. The part about the access support is, I'm particularly happy with what we were able to do here. The current license provided 3.5% gross annual revenues, and a capital payment over 10 years of $200,000. If you do the math, 3.5% is about, currently, it's around $190,000, $190,000 a year income for access purposes, for operation for your public access program. You have about 4,000 subscribers, and that's a really good number, and that was the number that really allowed me to make arguments to John Moore, the other give us a lot more money. The 3.5% comes out over 10 years to 1.9 million, and if you add the 200,000 in, you get a 10-year value of the license of $2.1 million. We negotiated an increase in the gross annual revenues from 3.5% to 4%, and we negotiated an increase in the capital payment from 200,000 to 300,000. What that does to the 10-year value of the licenses, it raises it up from 2.1 million to 2.475 million. In other words, over 10 years, a $375,000 increase in income for access support, that's a $37,500 per year raise for your access operation support, and that was difficult to get from Charter. I was very pleased we were able to do it, it was just sheer persistence. Now, the good news of that is, although we're getting a lot of money per year, a lot more money per year, $37,500, the cost, the added cost to the subscriber for the increase in capital will only be 20 cents per subscriber per month, and going from 3.5% to 4% will be 50 cents, so the additional cost will be 70 cents per subscriber per month. That is a relatively small amount of money to pay for the additional $37,000 per year that the town is getting. The last thing I'll mention is, we were able to keep liquidated damages in the license at section 14.8. For a while, Charter was saying they weren't going to do it, but they did. Liquidated damages are enforcement penalties. If we catch Charter in a breach of the license, we give them a notice, we conduct a public hearing, and if we find that they're in breach of the license, we can start to find them, depending on what the violation is, for amounts in the neighborhood of $50 a day, $100 a day, and so on. That doesn't sound like a lot, but if you stretch a violation of the license out over two or three months, pretty soon you're talking real money. But that's really not the point, the money isn't so much the point as the fact that that is a powerful weapon to keep Charter or any cable company from violating its license. So that's the license being proposed. We work very hard, but I will tell you, the hardest working folks were your committee. They did all the math, they did a beautiful business plan, we had a public hearing, we addressed... We addressed everybody's concerns. It was an all-around team effort, and I'm proud to have been part of the team, and I'm proud to present the license to you tonight with the recommendation that you approved. Thank you.
Attorney, I have a couple of questions, and maybe the other members of the Select Board do as well. We were given a piece of paper with some items on it. I just wanted to clarify what these are. I think you've gone over these. So the first one is the effective date. You need to just address that. And the person, John Marr, is that the person from?
Charter.
Yeah, okay. And then there's a section 5.5, recommit itself to provide quicker response times to customer complaints. Could you give us a little more chapter and verse on that? Was that in relation to a specific problem, or is this simply reaffirming their commitment to provide?
These are basically the agreements that were negotiated, and these were the key items. I'm not sure that Bill has this note. It came directly out of the negotiated paper, but we're talking section 12.2, Bill.
5.5.
No, it was 5.5.
Oh, the second one, customer service. Section 5.5, John Marr accepted our proposed additions to the section obligating Charter to recommit itself to provide quicker response times to customer complaints. Clearly, the cable advisory has, receives complaints, and the time, the response time has grown and grown. So what we, what we asked is to at least get something in writing to say, okay, we'll try to get back quicker. And we hope they will, but that's basically what that refers to.
Okay.
And the, and the language was taken from the license that is now in place, but, you know, this will really carry over to the new license. Did you want to talk about the next one?
Yeah, I wanted to go through each one just briefly. So everybody, and it's more, this is probably as much for the public as it is for us. So section 1212, and Attorney can jump in as he sees fit. This has to do with proposed additions to the section requiring production of required records upon request and maintenance of written proof of performance reports. It's having to do with section 74 and all that. So what would that be dealing with?
Basically, it just reaffirms that they have a responsibility to do what they're doing and keep up, keep the records. And it's written in the contract, and it was there. It's section 12.2, Bill, but basically, it's not an addition. It's just, well, we did, we did ask him to sort of emphasize this.
Yes. So the record, they're required to keep certain records, and the most important records they're required to keep are complaint records, a requirement of state law. And there's no, nothing in state law about how long they have to keep them. So we put some, we put a one-year, we negotiated a one-year timeframe where they have to keep the records, all complaint records. And if the board is interested in knowing complaints, or if the board wants to see proof of performance reports, which they're also required to keep, that is, they have to make certain signal tests on the system during the course of the year. I believe it's quarterly, and it's an FCC requirement. They have to test the signals, make sure that they comply with the FCC, and prepare a report. They don't have to give it to you, they send it to the FCC, but if you wish it, you can ask for it. And the third one is the strand maps, which are the, the actual architectural drawings of the plant. I think the main value of those is if the DPW is going to be doing some street repairs or something like that, and it may implicate where their cable lines are, they may need to look at these. But those three records are specified in 12.2, and you have a right to see them upon written request.
Thank you. The next item was covered by Attorney Harwick regarding the $300,000 and the 4%. Good work, good work. And then the last one is 13.7 EPG and PEG. I mean, I have no idea what that is, but I'm sure the rest of you do. So what does this have to do with? It's section 13.7.
Yeah, section 13.7, and it, basically, the core is they promised that they will, go ahead, John, why don't you talk?
Yeah, I'm going to let the attorney take.
13.7.
Right. An electronic program guide for PEG will tell you the programs that are on, just like it does for the other channels. Instead of, if you look at it right now, it's going to just say public access or local programming or something like that, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, you know, it doesn't tell you what the program is. So we have been fighting with cable companies for years because it's a real disincentive to people who want to watch public access, but they don't know what they're watching. So it'd be nice to know, is it a Select Board meeting? Is it the, you know, graduation ceremony? Is it the high school football game on Thanksgiving? What is it? They can do it, but it's technically complicated, and they have to hire a vendor, and it's kind of expensive to do it. But it can be done, and there are, there's a company called RCN, which is a consortium of Boston Edison and New England Telephone, I think, or whatever it's now called. And they provide EPGs to their municipal issuing authorities. And the jury is out about how well they work. I, you know, over the course of the next few years, the technology's going to improve, and it's going to be easier, I think, to get it. This particular provision, 13.7, says Charter, if you start giving EPGs for PEG out to other communities, you got to come and talk to us and give us one too. That's what it says. And that's the best we can get out of Charter for now. But it's something.
Yeah, sounds good. Well, thank you. Those are my questions from this end.
The original contract expired in June. We're looking for a September 1 that date signature because we want to keep them on focus. The negotiations have gone on and on and on, and as the attorney mentioned, we worked long and hard to do the best we could in a very difficult, changing situation. John's very aware of what's happening out in the world, streaming, how people are making lots of different choices. He's made it possible for people who might not be able to afford this modest, whatever, monthly expense, to be able to use YouTube as a resource. We talked long and hard in our committee about the importance of having the community informed. All of the meetings, all of the school events, all of the community activities, veterans' events are recorded. They're not just recorded and then thrown away, they're kept. We have a massive archive of what's happening in Westport. Nobody should tell anyone on this board they don't know what's going on. No one should be uninformed. I might spend half your life watching all the videos, and that might not be your preferred choice. It's not mine. But anyway, but I do think the opportunity to be informed is there, and I think your board should build on that. People tend to know, and they can ask questions, and that's because of John and Valerie and the hard work they do. The other job that John does, I think so well, is to work at the school and encourage young people to look at this as a field of endeavor they might want to build on. And some of them are excited. They're going to be, you know, down at NBC tomorrow, or CNN, or wherever. Some of them are just kind of learning how to look because that, you know, today's generation better pay attention to all this stuff that they're surrounded by. Now, John does this every day, so I'm going to give him at least three, three words. But as the chairman of the committee, I really feel you've seen the changes. That's what this little short sheet is. You've heard our attorney, who's worked amazingly hard over a long, hot summer to make Charter pay attention. And thank you, Bill, again. But this is a critically important service in this community, and I am really pleased to bring to you a contract that I hope you will sign and, you know, work with us to see what could happen. Because the questions we usually get are somebody's complaint about a program they want, and I can't do anything about that. Okay, John, what can you do? Tell people briefly, and then we'll ask them for.
I just wanted also to add that a lot of people out there may be complaining they don't already like Charter, and they may be saying, why are you signing 10 more years with Charter? We looked into that. That's the only cable company that's offering their services here. So if we don't have Charter, we don't have anything. So I wanted to make sure people did know that. And like Irene said, with the students, the students, even if they don't want to get into TV, they're learning a lot of skills, doing things in the class, outside the class. They're learning how to make, they're networking, they know how to do interviews when they go on job interviews, they've already had the experience of doing it. So we're teaching more than just TV production in the class. That's the focus of the class, but they're learning skills that they might not even know they're learning at the same time.
Why don't you mention the other committee members, just so they get some props? I was going to say, you haven't mentioned Renee yet. He did a lot of work.
Absolutely, Renee.
Donald Crutie, a technical guy.
And Bob Taylor, and we have new members that have been kind of watching, and Don Crutie, who's been on this committee forever and really pays attention to the technical issues. I don't know how many of you have gotten a letter from Charter that says, get your new rotor, rotor, whatever it is, modem, which I ignored for a while and then realized my internet was going off, and then got it and realized I was in a world I don't want to know about. And if somebody wants to buy me a glass of wine, I will tell you all the tales. But it was horrible to realize change in the 21st century is a lot of work. So I, we're going to talk more about how we can help with that. But we really have had a lot of involvement, and I think also, and that's what you're mentioning, really skilled people. Renee has a job in Fall River that has given him a lot of experience and has for years.
In Fall River, he's been through two other contracts, so he was a big asset to get onto this committee to do this.
Yeah. Steve, and Steve comes to the meetings and gives us archival history of how it was and how it will be.
I made the last one on my wife's birthday. I couldn't get away with going on that one. All right, if nobody else has anything, I'll move it. Let's move with the contract effective September 1, 2020.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Yeah, motion made in second, and I have a question too, Sean.
So I really appreciate the work that you guys did on this. I think you got a lot out of it. We were kind of in a bad situation with the old single provider. That works bad for us in the negotiations, so I appreciate the work you did. I do want to call out, though, the contract that we have is for cable TV services, right, and not internet provision. So I think the Internet Advisory Committee has been, and Renee is also on that and doing a really good job.
And that was purposeful. We asked for one of our members to sit. We see it as two trains running down a track. They're not parallel endpoints, but they certainly, right now, are both trying to expand communication in the town.
Yes, I just wanted to call out for the public that your internet service that you're getting through Charter Spectrum is not part of this contract. It's the television programming and the really important contribution to the local community that they're making. That's part of the cable contract, not the internet, even though it's the same company.
Yeah.
Well, is there a follow-up question regarding internet? Is that going to be contract up for review, or is that?
It's ready for your signature.
The internet is not a contract.
We don't, we don't make a deal on that.
There's no contract for the internet.
But it's dated September 1. It was originally to be renewed June 1. So our hope is, because we have captured with hard work, an agreement from Charter that I hope you all feel good about, because I think we have brought in more money and we have made the changes that are possible. This was not a one conversation. This was many conversations that our attorney has had with managers at Charter, and he understands what's possible, what's not possible. So I want you to feel really good that negotiations were well-run, but as soon as it's signed, everybody's on. If you want to take a lot of time to do it, who knows what the other side is going to do? They might say, well, maybe we need an extra month or so. Now, I'm not twisting any arms here, but I'm saying this is a negotiated renewal, and as John has said, when it was, when it was made a possibility in this town over 20 years ago, nobody was standing in line. What Charter did, and why the contract allows them to continue to be the provider, is they built the infrastructure. Good, bad, or indifferent, they built the house.
Yeah, I just want to get some questions. First of all, you made the motion to approve, and it was seconded. All right, so we're, so we're going in the direction I think you want us to go.
Great.
I just have, I had one question, then I have a second question, brought on by Sean's question. But this contract for TV expired in June, and the renewal date is September 1. So does that present a problem? Is there a gap?
It was not possible to get an agreement June 1. Bill, do you want to speak to that briefly? But we, you know, we were ready. We had done our homework.
Yeah, there isn't any problem. What we have is, this happens a lot, by the way. I would say that about half the licenses in the Commonwealth are over their date now for various reasons, a lot of it going back to problems during COVID. The way the Cable Division, the Massachusetts Department of Telecommunications and Cable look at it, and the way cable lawyers like me and like the lawyers or the cable companies look at it, is it's like a contract. If you, if you have a contract that runs over the term, but both parties continue to perform under the contract, then the contract is considered to be in full force and effect unless and until one of the parties says, that's it, we want out. Now, we were negotiating in good faith from June all the way through to September, and that's all it takes. So the current license, which expired in June, is, there is a legal fiction that it has continued to be in effect up until now. We've been getting the 3.5% payment. That counts. The capital payments were already made, but Charter was obligated to continue paying us the 3.5% per year until we get a new license, and they'll do that. And of course, they'll provide it, Ableton folks still got their cable service and still paid. So there isn't any legal problem about that lapse, and there isn't a financial problem about it, we'll get paid. So it happens. It's, we don't like to see it happen, but of necessity, it just does in these days and age, in this day and age. So no legal problem, no technical problem, no financial problem. It's kind of, you know, it, in this day and age, it's kind of the way we sometimes have to do business.
Bill, I do want to add, though, that we did discover in preparing for this, that in some communities where agreement was not made, there was no payment. It was like everything stopped, and that was our concern, and we do have, have that experience very close communities where without a signed agreement, nobody was going to send a payment based on whatever. So I don't know whether Charter would choose to do that, or they would stay with the current money that they're committed to our town, but as a committee, we wanted to advance an increase in funding. So when you're able to sign, that will begin. Until then, it won't.
Yeah, okay. That answers the question that I posed. But my last question, to blame on Sean, I'm a little bit confused. I think just the way we talked about it is confusing to the public about the internet piece of this. So is there an internet part to this contract? Or is there an internet contract we have to deal with? Or is that in perpetuity?
No, there's no internet agreement with Charter.
They're on their own on that.
They're just providing a service without, they don't need a license for that.
Verizon's here, too.
John, do you want to speak to that? But basically.
Sean, I know it's correct on that.
There's no licensing for the internet. There's no contract for the internet. It's direct to consumer. There's no government involvement.
I think it becomes easy if you call it community TV. And in bigger towns, they actually have a huge studio with lots of staff. They do lots of creative programming. They work with the schools. Depends on the population, like any community, but it's about the community having its own community television, equipment, staff, resources. And that's what makes everybody understand what's going on at the Selectments meetings because they can see it. We have the, all the equipment that it takes to make those recordings, but we don't, well, you can talk about equipment. You also can connect off all these buildings.
Well, that's not my question. So we're going in a different direction. I think the question is answered, okay? Thank you, Sean, for that advice. Okay, so what is the pleasure of the committee?
We moved it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll assume we're prepared to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Mission accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Great. Great.
Congratulations, and good evening, everyone. I'll let Charter go first thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Were you successful in getting Disney and Spectrum to agree to an agreement?
That's not just us, that's every spectrum.
Did anything happen today?
It was settled.
Oh, they did so?
Yep. Just some time for the, just some time for the footwork.
John, you saved Disney.
They did it for you. Thank you, Irene. John, thank you. Good work, good work. Give our regards to the committee.
Just wait and see.
Just waiting for us to get to him.
Yep.
All right, well, that was good. That's, that's a good thing, and people will be very interested in that. C is the request from the Westport River Watershed Alliance to approve the annual electronics recycling day on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, right behind Town Hall, 816 Main Road. Jim?
It's been a yearly event, it's been a successful event over the years, so I'd recommend approval. I hope the residents take advantage of the opportunity to get rid of some of their electronics.
I do, I know that.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. We look forward to that, and good luck. I'll be there. D, request from, this is a group called AGS HVAC. They were here recently to hang a banner for their annual motorcycle run to benefit the Westport Food Pantry. The event will be held October 7th. Jim, I'll follow. I think this is where we'd done everything, but this, this relates to the banner, just the banner part.
That's correct.
Yeah, it was more of an advertisement for them at first, and I think, Jim, you worked with them to tone that down with the, with the?
Yeah, there's a sample in there, it was toned down a little bit, it's.
Pretty busy for a banner that you're.
I was just thinking the same thing. It was the.
They're gonna make the food pantry more prominent than the business.
All right, that's what we asked for.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion on the banner? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, and motion carries, thank you, okay. Request from the Planning Board to form a new committee for short-term rentals comprised of five members from the following boards and/or committees. They are from the Planning Board, Mark Schmidt and Bob Dalor, Zoning Board of Appeals, Roger Menard and Jerry Cuttino, and from the Board of Health, Tanya Riden. Jim?
Well, town plan Michael Baris is here, he can give us all the details.
Give us some background on this?
Sure. So I'll, I'll just be brief. With the formation of the committee, we wanted to have a good cross-section of representation of town committees who'd have the relevant backgrounds to develop a regulatory framework for short-term rentals. So that's why we decided on the Planning Board, Zoning Board, and Board of Health. And so there are two main issues that this, that influenced the, this request to create this committee from the Planning Board. Foremost, the town's getting more complaints about disruptions from short-term rentals in folks' neighborhoods. And second, and, and, and second issue is that Westport's zoning bylaws don't actually allow these uses because they're not expressly referenced in the code. And so the Short-Term Rental Committee is going to be tasked with establishing some parameters for allowing these types of uses. And the goal is to have these regulations ready in time for town meeting 2024.
Is this to say that their short-term rentals are not permitted in Westport at the present time?
That's correct.
Well, how come we're all doing it?
You're breaking the law.
I mean, the, the, I, I can't speak to what Ralph's workflow is like on a, on a day-to-day basis. I know he's, he's very, very busy. We've been handling, not necessarily short-term rental complaints, but more zoning-related, zoning enforcement complaints more generally on a case-by-case basis. So the planning offices, you know, we don't, Ralph doesn't work, we don't oversee his work, but when we receive complaints, we help out within their office to administer zoning, or not administer zoning enforcement, but assist Ralph with the process. So if someone does have a complaint in their, their neighborhood, as has happened recently with the case that went to the ZBA on Spinnaker Way, we'll pursue enforcement.
The reason for my comment is, as a person who owns rental property, the state has no problem collecting. It's five points, it's 5%, whatever it is. And the town receives a 4% short-term rental tax. And, you know, they'll, they'll send you a note if you don't send that in on time. So if it's something that's not legal, it's funny, we're all doing it, and the state and the town seem to be happy with it. So it's just one of those quirks, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's definitely a little bit contradictory, and that's one of the reasons behind creating this committee, is to give a pathway to have those uses be legalized, but also to make sure that there's some regulations behind limiting some of those externalities that can be generated from the use.
I know all the times that I've, I've gone through the online services, on the open-air things, they always have a permit. Everyone I've gone into, they've had to permit by the talent to have the open-air housing. So, yeah, I was surprised we didn't have anything. The only little question I had, Michael, is there's nobody from the public on it, there's nobody at large or whatever. I hope they have some of their meetings primetime, so if somebody has concerns, they could show up. Then I'll, like, 10:30 in the morning or something. That would be my only concern. I, all these people are great, there are numerous committees, I know I'm on, Bob, Bob Dale is on like three of my committees, so they do a great job. The only thing I would be concerned about is getting the word out, that's all, just so the public can give some input. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further questions, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Chair, just the process, this is kind of a preliminary committee. Their recommendation is to go to the Planning Board. The Planning Board will have to hold public hearings and go through the whole zoning process for zoning amendments.
Oh, okay.
Beyond this, there'll be another public process as well.
All right.
Great, thanks.
Sounds a good idea, thank you. Okay, the next item is F, request to approve the contract with Pear Corporation. And is that how you pronounce it, Pear, Parry?
I, I call it both. But I think they do call it.
Well, par, I'll call it. Corporation for Design of Cemetery Expansion, $42,500 to be funded with the funds from the perpetual care account. Jim, maybe you can give us the background on this, I think it's self-explanatory.
So this would be the Beach Grove Cemetery, and it would be the north side of the Beach Grove Cemetery from the current garage, heading easterly north of the existing plots. So power engineering would go in and they would survey that area, they would locate the existing roads, do topo, they would come up with bid specs to prepare the area. So my understanding is, obviously, they'd cut down the trees, they excavate everything, that whole area out, they remove the rocks and any debris, and then they put the soil back, and they let it settle for a while before they started using it for burials in the future. But it's, we're filling up quickly in the Beach Grove Cemetery, this is just a short-term solution, but it's needed. So this, this will open up three areas on the north side of the cemetery.
It's probably in the attachment, but how many additional burial plots would it be? I know now, sometimes you have cremations and they go, you can put more in. How big is it?
So the full plots, they're looking at about 550 per section, and there'll be three sections.
Okay. Okay, my other question was, was there a competitive bid situation here?
There was not. Power Engineering did the previous work with the last expansion of the cemetery, so they do have a lot of the information. I could certainly go out and solicit additional quotes if the board wants. The town was happy with their work last time, but no.
Well, I, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just wondering if that's correct, that the way we're doing it is, is correct, they're not gonna have an issue with?
It's, it's an engineering services, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'll, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that's a good idea, since they've done all the work all the way up. The last plan that they, how long do they think it would take them to get this plan done? And $42,000 isn't a lot of money, you know, the survey and so forth.
I mean, it should be done in three, four months.
That won't? Most engineers, they use that up in a couple of weeks.
Well, time-wise, municipalities are always slow, right? I found that any engineer that doesn't work for municipality, we're kind of like their side job, right? So they do their other jobs and where they're filling, so I'd estimate it'd be three or four months. Push, paint, the shove, I mean, if we had somebody that was working on it full-time, you're looking at two weeks.
I mean, I mean, if we could expedite it a little bit, because of some of the situations we have out there. And I, and I think it's a good idea, since they've done the other work. Also, like, we talked on some of the other stuff, I'm, I'm getting a GPS model on this, and maybe if we can tie it in, if we can tie it into the existing cemetery, you know, that might be an additional cost. But I know Highways actually has somebody that's looking to come out and give them a demonstration on some of the newest technology in Rover, where, you know, the surveyor could go over there and push a button. This would be kind of, especially in the new section, but if we could tie some of the old stuff in, some of the problems that we've been having would be eliminated. So the GPS model and time. I mean, the company that's coming out actually for Highway will give a, if we have any model on any of our projects that are complete, no matter what the size, like, if we have that model from Highway, I mean, from Route 6, they will load it into the Rover as a demonstration. So, and they're looking, they're kind of jumping at the bit right now to come out and show it to us.
Okay.
Whichever one we could get first would be great. Even like, like the MS4 stuff, not the MS4, but the, the top-up drainage stuff, supposedly it was a design complete on that, something like that, anything like that. That's the other thing, it has to be tied into MS, Highway Coordinates, the cores, MS cores.
All right, but any, none of this causes us to hold off on this?
That's all right.
Yeah, so motion made, is there a second?
I'll second, but I have a question.
Motion made, no questions?
So I, we have kind of staffing situation at the Cemetery Department, so I'm wondering, is, does our staff need to support the work going on here, or do we have the staff support that we're gonna need?
This would be separate from the staff, this, they're pretty much independent on this study. So this will not impact the current staffing situation that we have.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? I guess it's time to vote. All in favor, can we say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous, motion carries, thank you. Okay, good. The next one is for G, request from the Planning Department for comment for a minor site plan approval for an auto sales room on 146 State Road. Jim, could you give us the chapter and version of that?
Yeah, they're going for minor site plan review, and they're doing some minor improvements to the site. Normally with the planning, I'm sorry, the board of selectmen do not comment on these. I don't see anything extraordinary about the plan or anything that really jumps out. If they do sell cars there in the future, they'll be coming before the board at some point to get a license.
Okay. I was gonna ask, whose vehicles are going to be displayed here? Maybe that's, I, this is, by the way, is upside down. There we go. Is somebody, a dealership or?
It would, it would be used kind of dealership. They're only looking for three or four spaces, though, so it.
Yeah, but on showrooms, you have to have a grease trap, that's been the, the holdup in the past. They'd spent a lot of money to put grease traps inside the building. Some have appealed to Boston, I think one got, didn't have to do it. But by law, they're supposed to have a grease interceptor when they have it on the showroom.
I can mention that to the planner. So at least they're aware of it.
Yeah, oil separator and grease scrap and stuff.
Okay, so we're just looking for comment here for the Planning Department. This is the Planning Board, right?
No comment this time, one for myself.
No comment.
So you don't want to make that comment about the?
No, they, they're aware of it.
All right. All right, so that's, there's no need to vote on this, we just, we have no, we have no comments, I guess, officially, based on what I'm hearing. Okay, got it, done, we're done with that item, thank you. For H, the request from Martin Costa to hold the clean, our Westport Cow.
There he goes again.
Fall cleanup event on Saturday, September the 23rd, 2026.
Don't stop him.
Jim, Jim, or, who did you, love, you should speak to this person.
Yeah, it, it's the same thing he's been doing, you know, he's having it twice a year now. So I, it's the same way, allow him to do it and notify the proper people that it'll be going on.
Are we moving it?
Yeah, I'm moving it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, I assume it's time to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are no abstentions or nays, so the motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, that includes action items. The next item, Jim, we put this on, Paula and I, we, when you were out, this had been something that had come up having to do with executive session minutes relating to the open meeting law. We weren't sure you were ready to discuss it tonight, we put it on there in case you wanted to, but if, if you are not, we can do it some other time. We just didn't, since we didn't have any other discussion items, we just thought we'd put it on there. Or perhaps you could just introduce the topic, and maybe we'd have a more full discussion later on.
So we have executive session meetings on a regular basis, when the time arrives, when the need arises, and those, we have, we have minutes for each one of those executive sessions. Those are normally held until the issue has been resolved, or the case has been dismissed, or for whatever reason we had to go on executive session has been nullified, or to some extent. So at some point, we need to release those minutes, or those portions of the minutes that do not cause an issue, and do not conflict with the reason for holding the executive session in the first place. So I, I think in the past, and Paula may, I don't know, put Paul on the squad.
The last time it was done was 2018, and that was for 2017. And it seems that Diane made a list kind of summarizing what the executive session was, and the names on it, and then you, it looks to me like it may have been read in an executive session meeting. And then you voted to release and/or hold, sort of what we do with permits. But it hasn't been done, so I do have, I have all the minutes, I was able to retrieve them all. So I didn't know what the process was until I just found a folder to, well, a few weeks ago, that showed what, how they've done it in the past. I didn't know if I was gonna have to scan them all in, and you guys were gonna have to read them all, or how that went. But it did look like it, a list was made, sort of bulleted, as to what was discussed, and if there were any names involved. And then there's a list, rather than reading through all of the minutes. So I can gladly go through them and do that if that's what you'd like me to figure out.
I don't know if Sean wants to chairman, but we, we had a complaint one time that they weren't being released at a timely manner, so we started addressing. Usually you make a list, then you ask legal, because you've got to redact some names and all that good stuff. But I don't think we've had really severe cases lately. We had some big ones before that they wanted, they wanted released, but usually just make a, a list and run it by legal, right? Did you have to do it while you were chair?
I don't remember, apparently not, because we have been doing it since 2018. I thought we did it since then, though.
Yeah, I thought we did a list, too.
We've got complaints.
Probably the polster around with the town.
I thought we did some since I've been.
Yeah.
I thought we did some, but better, because Tim, it was Tim King, and at some point.
Yeah, it should have been lined up, apparently, it wasn't, so, yeah, again, make a list.
I can look, I mean, this was the only file that I found so far. I can keep looking a little bit, you know what I mean? But I did notice that she did make lists and, and did it that way.
Yes, as we go through those minutes, we'll see if it was forwarded on, so I think it was one over the last couple of years that go down in numbers.
Yeah, go, go reverse order.
Yeah, there's certain things, like obviously lawsuits and personnel that were injured, that you have to redact a little bit. I don't think there's anything there.
All right, so I did look at the open meeting law, it didn't say a lot about the process. It said, there's a point where minutes of executive session should be released, made available to the public, unless they have, it says sensitive information or privileged information. So this is something we, among other things, we should have a process for it, and the process should include a routine review, maybe every year, every two years, whatever, whatever is normal for these things. Maybe it's, for tonight, we just ask you to, you and Paula to work to put the process together, at a future meeting, whether it's the next one or the one after that or something. Describe to us the process, and we'll officially put that in place. If we need to vote on it, we'll do that, and then, and we've got it in the record that we're gonna do it every so often to be in conformity to the open meeting law.
And then we can catch up.
Yeah, David at KP Law probably remember, there was a case or something that they wanted released, and so that brought it to light. And then he might have, he probably gave us the guidelines, so maybe he's got anything to his history.
Okay, no, I'm sure he does, yeah. Are you gonna say something?
No.
All right, so do we need most, we don't need a motion, this is a discussion, but if any further motions that you find are needed, just, Paula, let us know, we'll add it. That's good, because that's a sure that we, we've got to follow through with, otherwise we'd be criticized. And we're trying to always keep to the open meeting law. Very good, thank you. The next item is six, the Town Administrator Report.
Yes, so with the COVID provisions, alcohol-serving establishments, restaurants, to be able to use outside for their seating. It was supposed to end this past April, they extended it, but it's supposed to end this coming April, so restaurants or facilities that are using outdoor seating will need to file with the ABCC for alteration of premises. The Bay Breeze Inc., we met with them, they are currently working on their plans now, and it'll probably be before the board in the next month or two, considering these plans.
Through the chair, is that the Oyster Place?
Yes.
So they, so when, they never got that permit for the outdoor seating, yet that was just a COVID exemption?
So they did, they had a permit for some outdoor seating, but it was, it was bigger with the COVID, I think, than what was originally approved. So they're looking, they're working on that now. The wage study, the proposals went out, they came in a couple of weeks ago, Personnel Board. Board has met and reviewed them once, they're looking to interview two of the companies, the prices came in higher than anticipated, like a lot of things have recently, but we're working on that now, hopefully within the next couple of weeks, we'll have a recommendation to, to the Board of Selectmen. Route Six Water Extension, the last meeting, the Board asked me to look at what would be involved in tying the Macumber School into the water line along Route Six, this was discussed at the Infrastructure Oversight Committee at the last meeting, I know Manny brought it up, and, it's about 7,500 linear feet of water main installation if we were to do the loop, runs roughly anywhere from $250 to $350 a foot, so, so there's an expense to it, but there's also an expense if you don't do it, there's improvements that have to be made at the Macumber School water system, it's currently being monitored on a yearly basis, you're a public water supply operator, so, while there's a cost of doing this, it provides benefits, it provides a user at the end that will use a lot of water, that might reduce the amount of water that we have to blow off to keep the water clean, so, there are some benefits, and, and the committee is looking at that. Beach passes.
Look, go for a grant, you didn't mention going for a grant.
That's right. They did, um, we did apply for emergent contaminants in small and disadvantaged communities grant, we, we took the survey at this point, the final application should be ready to submit in the next couple of months, they were kind of getting, there's not a lot of money there, I think there's roughly $30 million for the state.
We'll take it.
Any money we can get would be, would be great.
Three point eight, like three and a half at one for a Roman.
Yes. Beach passes, the Town Clerk, Kristen Stinson, has been looking at different options, we met with City Hall Systems, that is currently doing some of our county work here with the tax collections, they do have a module that is, looks like it would work fairly well with what we're looking to do, it allows us to bring in some other databases, so that we can reference it with the census and with the tax, personal property tax information, so, she's working on that, she's been working quite a bit, we're looking to get something in place before, before December for the next season. Summer beach season, with the exception of last minute rush to get the lifeguards, I think it went pretty well, we had a couple of minor complaints, but nothing of significance, there's a lot of work that went into it behind the scenes, Chris Gonzalez on the Highway Department for getting the beach up, beach up and ready, getting the equipment down there, the Beach Committee, Sharon Leach, Paula Brown, Perry Long, Leon Farias, and William Underwood, you know, just overseeing the operations of the beach, they monitor the gates, they order equipment, they help track down some of the lifeguards, Dana Stewart, the Recreation Director, she helped quite a bit with the lifeguard recruitment over the site in the beginning of the year, and then the head lifeguard, Mike Proto, did a, did a great job, I mean, he scheduled everybody to get along, he kept the, the lifeguards down there throughout the summer, it gets, gets difficult at the end when the kids start going back to school and leaving, but he was able to cover the beach right up through Labor Day, so, overall, I think it went pretty well.
Got a question on that, uh, to prevent that personnel issue that we had this year, next year, is the Beach Committee looking into steps to get people to maybe commit early, or?
Yes, I think the Beach Committee is, and I've also spoken to Dana a few times, and, we're hoping that Mike Proto, the head lifeguard comes back, he's planning on coming back next year, so if that's the case, we're looking to start early, maybe December, January, to see if we can start getting some commitments to some of the lifeguards, we have a good group down there now, I think a few of those, if not most of them, want to come back, so, we'll be in better shape next year, and we'll be more prepared next year.
Great.
The Beach Committee, be brief for us, good.
Okay, Jim, can, do you, say more?
Cemetery staffing, continue to look at different options, Highway Department has been helping to, Chris over there has been helping to dig some of the graves, we had another injury with one of the employees, and we're hoping he comes back tomorrow, at least on a limited basis, we looked at the temp agency to see if we could get somebody in, we did get one qualified applicant, but I think he's looking for longer term, you know, six months minimum, and, you know, if it was April or May, I think six months would work, this time of year, I don't know if six months is the best, but we, we haven't rolled it out, we're still looking at options there, two seasoned employees are back, so we, we kind of have three or four, and the foreman may or may not be back in the next week or two, we have a meeting set up, end of this week or the beginning of next, and we should have more information on that, so. We are behind at the cemetery for a number of reasons, one, because we're short staff, the other is it's just been a tough year with growing, you know, we've had more rain than we've had in previous years, and, you know, instead of cutting once a month, they're cutting two, three times a month, this cemetery, so it's been a difficult year for everybody. I will say, the guys down there have stepped up over the last month, they've, you know, we've had, I've had one employee that was not feeling well at all today, and he came in, we had a burial this morning, just to cover that, which was, was a big help. Dine students, they're looking to go back within the next week or two, they've done quite a bit of work down there, they've, they've re-signed the garage, they've, they're gonna upgrade the electrical service going into the garage, they've installed all the walls and plumbing, they did rough plumbing and electrical for the bathroom, and a break room at the back of the cemetery garage building, the septic system was installed last year, so hopefully over the next couple of months, that bathroom will be completed, the re-siding will be completed, and the electrical service will be upgraded, so, they've done quite a bit of work, and it looks nice, they also did other work too, they, they replaced hardware and broken boards on all the cemetery gates, if you look at them now, they're all nice and white, and they painted, they painted part of the building, so, they've been great to work with, we did put in a request to see if they had any interest in kind of building a new table, a new cabinets here, we haven't got that yet, but we will push them on that as well. Town Hall painting, we had some CPC money that was approved at the last meeting, about $115,000, and that was supposed to be from repair of some of the trim work, painting of this building, the areas that are white, it's difficult, the procurement process requires us to pay prevailing wage, it requires us to do anything over $50,000 to go up to bid, labor's over $50,000, you know, these performance bonds, it's, it's a difficult process, we put some feelers out there, and, because it's a three-story building, because we have dorms up top and a kupla up top, and they're saying that we're actually doing staging on the roof just to take care of the kupla, just the painting of this building could run anywhere from $250 to $350,000, so...
Do you go with the old ice cream?
We, we may look to do some smaller things, just even the entrance doors, to clean those up, to paint the entrance doors, there's a railing that needs to be replaced out here, just to get us through for the next, in the short term, and see what the long-term plan's out. We did receive a letter that's in your, that was out in your packet from Chief Pelletier, who has announced his retirement as of January 6th, so we will recognize that, I guess at a future meeting, but I just wanted to let the Board know that that's there, and we'll have to start the process of looking for a new chief of the Police Department. There's also notified, we received a $150,000 earmark from Senator Rodjic for the Gifford Road, Route 177 intersection, we've been trying to work with Mass DOT, we try to avoid a large project, where you have to go through the full design process, with Mass Highway, that's like a five to seven year design process, we're hoping that we can do it as a permit, where we could just use that 150, put most of it towards construction as opposed to studies and designs, so if they can build a overhead blinking light and replace the outdated ones that are there. Mass Highway got back to me today, they've done some pricing, they're bidding pricing, and they seem to think that it would be under $100,000 to construct it, so if we can get the design done fairly cheaply, they have to embolism and stuff, so it does, a little bit expensive, but they seem to think that we can do it for 150 design and construction, so, we'll work on that as well.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Question, comments, Mary?
Mr. Daniel Cole, you know, they merged with guys, so you might want to look to them.
Jeff and Bronz.
Okay, other comments, questions, ideas, thoughts? Thank you, Jim, there's a lot there, a lot there to think about. Okay, the next item is seven, the approval of minutes, that's, Manny, is that you, or?
Yes.
Who does that?
Not me anymore.
Were we all present for both?
No, I was absent on the 21st.
Oh, that's right, Sean, all right, so what can we approve, just the first?
Let's, let's move them separately.
All right, so, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, one move August 1st.
Uh, move the minutes of August 1st.
So what?
Motion made and seconded, any comments, questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous, you were here for that one, Sean. The next item is B, the, I approve, recommend approval of the minutes of August 21st.
So what?
Motion made and seconded, any comments, questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any abstentions, one, so we have four in favor, one abstention, thank you, and both of those carry. Next item is always the exciting report on the Bill Warren.
It's come back to normal, it's like pretty much standard, we don't have any more of the like crazy influxes or outfluxes of money, so, yep, it was all said, I signed it.
Well, thank you, that's the kind of report, if it's just the same report every time, we would be happy.
It's basically the same.
Okay, the next item is nine, the Selectmen Liaison Committee reports, and I'll start with Manny, go this way for particular reasons.
So, we had, we had a, the long-term building committee, we had a walk-through on the high school, it was going quite well, the building inspector was present, he was there.
We had, we had two meetings for that committee, actually, it's moving on quite quickly.
And, one of the things that we did find out while we were in there, I mean, we, we have a new roof, the building was actually abated for asbestos in the early 2003 or something like that, so, we've been doing the right things, the septic seems to be Title Five compliant, the, the school's still using it as an administration, they have, they also have that daycare, which has been, I mean, it's, it's going quite well there, I think.
After school care.
We're still using, using the building quite extensively, and then I, I believe the Board of Health is actually doing a clinic, using the, the old cafeteria for a clinic, we're looking at the old nurses station in there, I mean, I think if we get in a pinch, and we have to vacate the annex, we could possibly do some minor renovations in furniture and move right into that, that's, that's my opinion, we ran into the, to the IT Director for the school, who was very helpful, said the whole building is wired, we could, you know, pretty much just plug stuff in, it all has, all the rooms have Wi-Fi, he's, he works with, with the police and fire, we're all tried, I think he said the police department is the hub.
Yeah, Gordon's in charge of that, yeah, he does the school, yeah.
And, yeah, so, he has a full-time staff there, and if we moved any offices there, he would be willing to work with us, so, I mean, some of the things, you know, one of the members of the Board's an architect, he's, see, the, the way this moves forward and using the building is the cost of renovations, that's what will trigger code upgrades, and many that, like the use that we'd be using for municipal offices will be less stringent than what the school was, or I don't, I don't think it's gonna trigger much if we did move, like say, the annex there, if we had to, because another thing that we need to look to with the annex, and, I mean, this is on, you know, being on the long-term building committee, I've been looking at that building a little bit, and some of the problems, Jim, do we have any kind of, we have any plans for any renovations at the annex, like as far as like septic system, or, you know, we've been having those problems?
We don't, the only, the only thing we can do is replace two of the AC units, two more have to be, or should be replaced in the near future.
Because one of the things I did find with that building, the septic at that building is a failed Title V system.
The annex?
Yes, so, and that has been the case since the regulation changed in 1995, so, you know, being the town, we're not exempt from those things either, you know, I mean, the Board out this house there, they've sent these letters out, so people with failed cesspools, those, that place has seepage pits, which put, put it closer to the water table, and they've been, they won't pass Title V since the regulation changed in 1995, so we need to kind of consider what we're doing there too, that's pretty much on the building, and then the infrastructure, like you said, we get the Macumber, we'll, Plan Department's going for a grant for PFAS, which, as our colleague Bob Dale has said on it, is, is, I mean, it's something that would be of great concern, it's, it's what our, what Route Six is kind of plagued with, and it's not nitrogen, it's PFAS, the EPA's got a lot of stuff coming out, and I, I mean, I think it's good for our project, and they get that grant going our way, and I think it'll help, can't help with the town, all their drinking water problems, we gotta start looking in that direction, maybe possibly reach out with, get the Board of Health involved with this, with the Planning Board, PFAS, especially since, you know, I mean, we have some members on that Board that are former DEP, and they kind of know those circles, that would be of assistance, basically with the PFAS is, it's, as Bob Dale put it, forever chemicals in the groundwater, that are, like nitrogen is, is an essential element that can be treated by the soil in certain ways, these chemicals, they came in from industry and different discharges, they never go away, so if they're in your drinking water, the only way, if you have municipal water supply, they can, they can be filtered through a treatment plant, but a well in the ground doesn't, doesn't do anything for us, but, I think we're, we finally are moving in the right direction with that, if we just keep on it, there ought to be, I think we'll see some good things in the future.
Okay.
Just to piggyback, Manny, on the infrastructure, Committee, the thing that's holding us up is DCR, we need the permit that's, it's not a...
Need the basin transfer permit.
Yeah, we need, we need help with that, kind of, I don't want to say drag along, but we need, we need to take some action, because we've got permits done, we're negotiating to try to get the pump station on, on, on a person's property, Jim and Roger are working on that, so, if we want to keep this project rolling, we need a DCR to step up, have we talked to Mike or Paula yet on that?
We have, and I, I know Maury gained last week, did a draft letter, and it's still kind of being reviewed, working.
Yeah, Maury's? Yeah, I don't, I don't know if the whole Committee will stand by that, but by next meeting, if we don't have any action, we might want something from the Board, so I have an eloquent letter asking of the Gideon, the other thing was working with Irene, trying to get the cable committee done, Mike's still chugging along too, so, that's my report.
Thank you, and you, you finished, Manny?
Yes.
Okay, the other thing I have to mention is the Audit Committee, we do have our fifth member, as you know, and we're gonna be having meetings again, starting, I think, on October the 2nd, again, this is the next process, the next cycle, is the fiscal year 23 that we're working on now, because the last report we talked about, when Tony was here, was fiscal 22, and we talked about that, and we need to get that going, so, we're on top of that, that's, that's all I have, Shauna?
There's a school buildings steering committee meeting next week, is it still going on? I'm trying to coordinate the meeting of the Internet Advisory Committee, having a hard time getting David Cole and Keith Noble and myself on the same day, so we're, hopefully in the next few weeks, we'll have that, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Anne?
I just had affordable housing, there's a fundraiser this Thursday for the Habitat for Humanity House at the winery, if it rains, it'll be net this Thursday, and, they are a little disappointed that there's no real options for them to find some affordable housing, which we really badly need in Westport, they're working on it, hopefully they find some.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Thank you, all right, that would conclude that item, the next item is comments, or, is our comments and statements from the public, we don't have any members of the public here, Val, you're a member of the public.
There you go.
I was so down with the cable contract.
Thanks.
Thank you for the comment, appreciate it. Okay, the next item is the usual Boards, Committees, Commissions vacancy list, those are on the website, we have had some success of late on a few things, and, we gotta keep it going, so we ask people to come forward and thank all the people who work for the town, a whole long list, as we know, of people who work without compensation, put in hours and hours of, of effort, so we, we rely on them and thank them. Okay, I don't think there are any, but Jim or Paula, are there any topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of the, of the meeting? None? Okay, next item is the executive session, I need to read this, pursuant to the provisions of MGLC 30A, Section 21A, the Chair declares an open meeting will have a detrimental effect to a... to, A, Information Technology Department head Keith Novo's salary discussion, and B, approve August 21, 23 minutes. This would be in need of roll call, for a motion and then the roll call.
Do you expect to come open, just to close?
Oh yes, I should mention that. We will come back into open session for the sole purpose of adjourned the open session, once we come back into motion.
So will Steve Wood.
Second, Shalma Shifel.
Motion made and seconded, going to executive session, roll call, vote, Manny?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye, Steve Wood.
Richard Brewer, aye?
Aye, Shalma Shifel, and I am Dox.
Okay, it's unanimous, we'll take a pause here. Before we go into executive session, we'll give Val a chance to finish up. Thank you, Val.